...town council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Leona.
Counselor Souza. Counselor Perry. Counselor Mello. Counselor Lambert. Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Consent agenda, there are no minutes available tonight. Received the minutes from the following boards and commissions is the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission. Correspondence received and filed, General Auto Recycling, Inc., Weekly Two. Brenda Reposa regarding Lewis Street Asphalt Birm. Evan Smith, President, Discover Newport Annual Fiscal Report, ending March 31st, 2015. Copy unfilled in the town clerk's office. Approval of tax assessor abatements. Denise Surratt, Treasurer, Budget and Revenue Report for August 2015. Correspondence from the Honorable Representative John G. Edwards responding to letter from Attorney John Paglirini regarding proposal for the law relative to grow distribution license for medical marijuana, license being contemplated by General Assembly. I'd like to pull 3B and 6 off. Would any other counselors like to pull one of the consent agenda items off? All right. Yes. Sure, 3A. Anyone else? Councilman Perry, 3A, General Auto Recycling, Inc., Weekly Reports Two.
I believe at the last meeting we had, Mr. Pelletier actually requested that we get further, more detailed, I guess they were, updates on what's going on there.
I believe Matt knows a little bit more.
Councilman, I believe that... Hello? Okay. I had asked the clerk to include the email strings that went back and forth between me and Robin Main, the counsel for this junkyard, because we had an extensive back and forth. I asked for more detail. I said, "These reports all look the same." It's been noted. And I got back a good deal more detail, not all of which I'm going to be able to recall, sitting here without my computer. But, long story short, is there is measurable progress being made on this compliance effort. A fair amount of money has been spent. There's been a lot of visits to the property by various inspectors, and they've been in land evidence, trying to clarify the boundaries, ownership, and a number of issues regarding their deeds. So, I believe there's ample progress being made, and I keep raising the concern that if they don't change the way the report looks, they're going to keep getting these questions. But, I would expect for the next council meeting that we'll have that full email string disclosed so that everybody can see that there's a lot of dialogue and some progress being made.
C-83B, that's me. Brenda Reposa regarding Lewis Street Asphalt Birm. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update to the council that Mrs. Reposa has talked to Steve and Belushi, and they had a meeting with Matt last Tuesday. And they're trying to, and I'll let Steve explain, but they're trying to make some kind of resolution to this problem. I did drive down here, and I did go to her property and walk around. What struck me immediately was, of course, there's going to be water pouring into that property because it's right at the bottom. I don't know if any of you have seen it. And with discussions with Steve and Mrs. Reposa, I guess the original street should have had more extensive drain, and they really wasn't anticipating, which I don't know why, all that water going down there. So, the original building of this property didn't, the streets really didn't have what it needed. So, I just kind of want to bring this up because I think it's important in the future that when the planning board, or when people look at plans, they really think of the future, future homes being built in these areas, and maybe make sure that the construction is done properly before we sign over the streets or accept the streets. Steve? You gotta press the button.
There it is. Lewis Street is at the bottom of a hill that starts at the old Connet Bay Manor with the new name and runs basically all the way down to the river. There's eight streets involved with no drainage. And by the time it gets to Lewis Street, which runs parallel to Main, five roads are basically running straight down to Lewis Street, and all of the water's hitting that way. I spoke to Brenda Reposa this morning. She was in court for jury duty. She called me at lunch. I'm going to meet her at the first available time she has and maybe come up with a solution that may involve a drainage easement along the side of her property, a catch basin or something, but it's really tight, and it's a tremendous amount of water. No matter what we put in there, catch basins, drainage, when we get these big storms, it's going over, and it's tough, so... But, we're going to meet with her and try to solve, help her out and help the property out.
Now, I understand that there's also a neighbor down there who has a pool, and all the water goes into that pool also. It's pretty bad. If any of you want to take a ride down there, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, there's been complaints. One storm, the whole foundation of the deck on the side of the house went out.
Yep.
You know, it just pours down and wipes out everything in its path, and it's tough to control with no drainage uphill.
Steve, I was down there today also, and I noticed that the, it looks like a curbing, a tar curbing that you put up. It looks higher than actually the neighbor on the right-hand side.
Yeah, we did that on purpose. It's a common procedure we use when people call and water is coming from this street into their driveway. We raise it maybe two inches, an inch and a half, and, you know, put a strip across their property so the water goes downhill. That property had a berm, and we did the same thing. Because it was on a corner, the water not only was running straight down the hill, it wasn't making the corner. It was just jumping the curb and burying them. So, we raised it two inches all the way across again. And unfortunately, we've done that to several houses going up the hill, right on Salisbury, and unfortunately, there at the bottom of the hill. But, it was, we were stuck. The neighbor that we fixed, the whole right side of his house was getting blown out with shrubs, and the left side, the water was going down his driveway and washing out the whole back of the property. And there's a cliff off the back of all these properties. It's just not a gentle slope. It like falls right off, so it's a tough area, you know what I'm saying? Probably never should have been built on in the first place.
So, would a catch basin kind of solve that?
Oh, well, if, only if we can take that catch basin and run the drainage pipe through their property and dump it off the cliff. They're going to have to allow that. They're nice properties. We'll make a mess, but I'll talk to them about it. It could be a way of helping the issue out.
But, the only way that catch basin would work is if the drainage was flowing...
Well, it would catch it as it's going along the side. It would drop into it. We'd grade it that way.
Because there's about seven houses all along that street, correct?
There's drainage at the bottom of the hill. There's two catch basins at a private at the end of Ames, which is the next street over.
Okay.
Done privately by them people, and they're the worst. They get the brunt of everything, and they put their own 12-inch drain line out their property, and it dumps out back. And they have two basins, but that's private. In the town, we put, there's about three basins at the southern end of Lewis because they were getting swamped on the corner and down from Oakland, so... And that runs straight out through her property, so we have to have easements and property rights to go out through private property, and most of it is really nice and all fenced and, you know, decorated tree shrub, so it's difficult.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Matt, is there anything you'd like to add? Because I know you met with Mrs. Reposa. No, okay. Six, correspondence from the Honorable Representative John G. Edwards responding to letter from Attorney Paglirini regarding proposed law relative to grow distribution license for medical marijuana, license being contemplated by the General Assembly. I think you've all received Representative Edwards' letter in your packet. I've asked, well, he offered to come and explain to all of you what is actually going on with these bills and what he feels we should be concerned with. Jay?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I sent this in a response to an email that was sent to you as a group that purported that the General Assembly had something before them that was imminent, that we were going to go back into full session. We were going to be passing something, a social issue that dealt with marijuana. And everything I read in the email was basically false. The General Assembly had, earlier in the session, we had a bill which might have done this, was withdrawn at the request of the sponsor. There is nothing before the General Assembly currently. There's nothing that was even heard by the Judiciary Committee, nothing even coming to the floor. So, if the town council wishes to take an approach where you want to do something with your zoning to preclude these particular pieces of, these grow places, if you want to preclude them, that's your prerogative. But, as the letter purported, originally, they said that the wolves are at the gate. Nothing could be further from the truth. There is no wolves at the gate. There is nothing at the gate. The General Assembly has nothing before it, and we are not coming back in special session, especially for a social issue. My four terms up there, we've only come back twice. Once was to deal with a supplemental budget, and the other term was we came back to deal with pension reform. We would not come back for a social issue dealing with marijuana. So, if you, as a council, so wish to address this issue, I would recommend you take your time. You have a great solicitor. You have a great administrator. They can guide you, but you do not need to rush headlong into this issue because there is nothing imminent before the General Assembly. And if this council so decides, you have a delegation of five. We'd be more than willing to introduce legislation on your behalf that would preclude these statewide.
Okay.
If that is your choice.
Any questions from the council? Joe?
Just want to say, Representative, thank you for coming and explaining this. I think a lot of people were becoming a little bit hysterical, thinking that this was flying through along with the stadium and the tolls. But, I'm just glad you came down to explain this. I think the concern mostly was that when you have so much concentrated in one area that, you know, we've read about, you know, armed invasions and robberies where these places have been robbed, it just didn't make sense to have it, you know, so much in one area, particularly out here where, I mean, Providence has a large police force and a lot of factories. It just seemed it made more sense than try to put it out in a rural area where we have two cops at any given time on duty.
Now, your concerns are very valid, Councilman. We, as your representatives, we take that under advisement, and we look, you know, forward to working with this council, working with the council in Portsmouth as well, to assist you in any way, and if you have any issues, we're always available. We're always, you know, ready to take your calls or to work with you as a council. So, if you have anything, let us know.
Rep. Edwards, I'd just like clarification, and I spoke to you before. An email was sent out to all of us, excuse me. And it had two bills, one coming from the House and one coming from the Senate. And I just want to, one, the Senate bill came out April 1st. It never made it out of committee in the Senate.
No.
So, that is gone. And the House bill, from my understanding, is that it got pulled.
It was withdrawn at the sponsor's request, yes.
I just want to clarify that so that, you know, whoever sent out the email is fully aware of what's going on. I don't follow it totally. I know you do, and we depend on you.
Once a bill has been withdrawn in that way, it doesn't come back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It would have to be reintroduced, and the only way to reintroduce it this year is if we had a special session. You'd have to have permission from the Speaker and the leadership team, and I don't see that happening with a bill that was very unpopular, even in its introduction, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Now, we have referred this to our attorney, so if he has any questions, Jay, or any help, he can contact.
Great. And if you have any suggestions for legislation you wanted us to introduce on your behalf, we'd be more than willing to do that.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council.
Appointments and resignations.
Madam President, I move the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Appointments and resignation. Resignation of Keith J. Corey Recreation Coordinator. Do I have a motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Unfinished business, proposal for casino in Tiverton and Platte, 203 Lot 111 and Platte 204, lots 101, 102, 103, and 106 and 108. West side of William Canning Boulevard, Tiverton. I'd like to welcome the Lincoln Town Administrator, T. Joseph Armin, the town council president, Keith Maxon, and also the town financial director is here from Armin. Welcome. Basically, when your fire chief and police chief were here last week, we just asked them to explain to us what you look as advantages of having the casino in your town or any kind of disadvantages you would like to share with us.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having us. Just for a way of background, I have been the elected town administrator in Lincoln, elected in 2006 to today. The Lincoln Twin River Casino is once Lincoln Park. Originally, it was a racetrack. In the late 90s, the state introduced the first, what we call, video lottery machines, which were declared a extension of, at that time, permitted gaming or gambling. It was about 1,500 machines as we went into the late 90s and the year 2000. At that point, the town was taxing the facility. Its original tax assessment was, I believe, on $22 million. There was 1,500 machines. As said, the town had a 1.25% share of that. So, I point that out to know that that situation is slightly different than yours. That was represented about a decade of incremental growth. It started out with expansions of machines, renovations of the facility, expansion of hours to a 2:00 AM closing, to then a 24-hour business, and then, lastly, the inclusion of table games, which required a local referendum. In Lincoln, that referendum passed by about 74% of the vote. Today's share is 1.45% of the VLT machines, which I believe is also the Newport share. And due to a slippage clause that the town had gotten put in from the state, the town now gets 1% of all table games in addition to the VLT share. So, all that said, when I came into office, the town was collecting property taxes, still does. I'll give you those amounts. The VLT or gaming share was just under $5 million in 2007. As I say, it had already been, had some substantial growth prior to that for about eight years. Coming into office and working with Mr. Ward and Town Council President McSoud, who are both here tonight, the town became concerned about how that revenue had been used. And by that, I mean it was all contained in the town's operating budget. A further review showed that taxes had actually increased in that previous four-year period substantially. So, in effect, and to summarize it, the money was simply applied towards new spending. Recognizing that, whether it would be the next day or years down the road, that gaming revenue, unlike taxes, was dependent on various things, mostly a market, market share. The town chose in 2008 to cap its gaming revenue. And so, there was already $5.2 million in the operating budget. The taxes have always been part of the operating budget, and we consider the taxes very stable. They've gone up significantly with the value of the property. However, we did feel that it was no longer appropriate to continue putting gaming money into operational expenses. So, in 2008, as part of capping that money, all additional money above the 5.2 number at the end of each fiscal year, not at the beginning, at the end of each fiscal year, was then accounted for in a restricted account for capital improvement only. And what accompanied that, and I'll leave you with a copy, was the town adopted a 20-year capital plan. Now, in this plan is not just gaming revenue, it's retiring debt, it's other... The town also caps off its surplus. The town currently has a 10% surplus of its budget. We have an approximately $77,500,000 budget to round it off. Of that 10% surplus, 8% of that is unrestricted. So, all dollars in each budget year that come in above the 8% go equally into another capital fund or into the capital program. So, there's other avenues of revenue in addition to the gaming money supporting the town's capital program. So, to date, after knowing all that background, the VLT share in 2014, a year ago, was $6,695,000. That created an overage under our cap of $1,495,000. That money was then restricted into this capital plan and could only be used for capital improvements. The town funds these capital improvements by doing what's called supplemental appropriations with each annual budget, so they're not included in the budget. They're done as individual appropriations outside of the budget, which I can also leave you an example of, which means the money can only be spent for that express purpose. Because there was slippage unexpected, slippage means that the VLT slipped slightly in 2014 by a very small amount. However, it activated a state clause that then provided the town with 1% of the table games. So, in close of June 30th of 2015, the town took in $6,815,508 in VLT, video lottery share, and another $1,058,000 in table games. And so, the overage that we accumulated as of last June 30th was $2,669. That money has been placed in our restricted capital account. So, not to be redundant, you can see from 2008 to date what we recognize. And we also looked at other factors in restricting this money. All too often, when you look at gaming proposals around us in New England and other places, and ones that have been put in place in Leyla, Connecticut, and other places, there tends to be a tendency to take a set amount of money and spend it in the next fiscal year by adding, whether it's public safety or infrastructure resources or other resources. We elected to wait and evaluate whether those things were necessary. Our findings, since the first VLT machine was put in, and prior to my coming into office, the police department increased by two offices and has not increased since 2006. And when I say not increase, there's no statistical need to increase the police department. It's currently at 36 police officers. So, there's always a lot of assumptions with public safety. We do a monthly analysis. I know you've had the chief and fire chief in, and I won't be redundant with what they had to say. However, we found that we were already at the capacity to service that facility with our current public safety resources. And from the town's perspective, that's police and rescue. So, the capital plan I've just outlined to you from the year 2009, 2009, actually going '09, '10, because we had to accumulate money before we began to appropriate it. The town has spent $20 million on capital improvements with, at that time, borrowing $5 million, which was pre-approved and paid forward retired debt. So, the $5 million bond was approved before we started the plan. $9,720,000 of that is a direct result of gaming share. The other money comes from, as I tell you, the budget overflows and the fact that we did have a $5 million bond. Last year, actually, two years ago, with the onset of Massachusetts approvals, we went one step further. And we've now capped the money additional time. Next June 30th, 15% of all funds in excess of $5.2 million will be put aside for specifically a budget reserve sometime in the future. The following June 30th of '17, an additional 15% for now a 30% total for every dime taken in above the capped amount before it can go to the capital account will first have to go to a budgetary reserve account until we know what the future of gaming monies will be. So, all that said, the town has devised a way that if, in fact, without hitting its operating budget and/or tax levy, the town could lose 33% of this income. So, we feel quite comfortable that this was the appropriate thing to do. I know there's been questions, effects, and I believe you have some independent reports on the surrounding property values. We found no correlation during three reevaluation cycles. By that, I mean the median change was no different than anywhere else in town. Crime outside of, and I'm specifying outside of the casino simply because defining, you know, there's always a concern about neighborhoods. Again, there was no change or correlation in any of the crimes off the property whatsoever. And I'm sure that the police chief had those statistics for you, or the town can make them available. Effect on other businesses, our other businesses, we measure mostly, we have... Our casino is not in a commercial area. It was born years ago in a residential area, 50-some years ago. We do have a commercial strip that is about two miles from the casino, which is thriving, and that would be what you would know as the 116 Lincoln Mall area. The town, in food and beverage taxes, the town currently receives close to $1 million in revenue from not just the casino, but all those other businesses, the restaurants and small shops and stuff. So, evidence is that they're actually thriving. Our occupancy rate along that commercial strip is, except for two buildings outside of the strip, is about 100% at this time. Our tax levy over the past seven years, I'm going to describe it as stable. We've actually had two small levy decreases. By stable, we have in the beginning years a small increase, and in one odd year, I believe we had a 1% increase. I believe, I can let Mr. Ward give you exact numbers, but I believe when you balance it over the seven years, it's literally been no increase. So, I have brought you other documents to show you what that money has been spent on. I can give you those tonight, what the annual returns have been on the gaming shares. I do need, again, to remind you, Lincoln had the luxury of seeing incremental growth. We also, I believe I had the luxury of seeing mistakes made with that revenue early on. And by call mistakes, meaning just spending revenue because you have it, putting it into operating budgets, budgets that if the revenue goes away, you're going to have to make up. So, it'd probably be a good time to take any questions. As I say, the taxes from the property, once again, we've evolved quite a bit. Our current taxes from all sources, that would be property, tangible, personal, and vendors who bring in the machines. So, unlike a Native American casino, which is, there is no tax, say, as in... So, unlike a Native American casino, which is, there is no tax, say, as in Layla, Connecticut, I believe we are at, and this is a total of all categories, about 3.8 million. So, that's property tax, tangible tax, taxes on the individual machines, fixtures, and property. The, the property itself, just the, the real estate value is, and we are in a tax treaty as a result of a lawsuit, is $95 million on just the physical plant. So, as I said, I'd probably be better to answer any of your questions at this time.
Any questions from the council?
I have some, Madam President. Thank you, first of all, for taking the time out of your busy weekday and coming down here and giving us a briefing on what's going on in Lincoln. I have a few questions. One is, what is your total population in Lincoln right now?
About 21,000 people. However, it's a, significantly, and I'm not sure I can measure it, a, we, about 40% of our tax levy is commercial.
That was one of my questions.
Yes, it's about 40% of our base is a result of commercial tax and properties. So, we have several major interstates that cross through. We have a pretty vibrant business.
Do you have industrial parks?
Yes, we have industrial parks, we have office parks, we have the Amica campus, we have the casino, we have the mall, we have several restaurants in that zone. So, we have a fairly significant transient population during the day, is what I would describe it as.
Okay. Your, your setup of your committees in, in Lincoln, do you have a budget committee or?
So, the town of Lincoln does an annual financial town meeting. We have a budget board that, so in Lincoln, I prepare the annual budgets. They are reviewed by a budget board that then makes recommendations to the annual meeting, and then the voters have the final say.
And how that money was being dispersed, like you just said, with the 15%? Was that voted on by the taxpayers or was that done by the budget?
All, all the restrictive clauses were done by the town council.
All by the town council?
Yes.
Okay.
This, you have to understand, there's, there's no tax revenue that's been diverted. It's all gaming shear. The tax revenue goes 100% to the voters. So, this is, we consider it to be other revenues, which your solicitor has advised us on. And we explored the fact that the town council would be the appropriate agency to restrict those revenues.
Okay. Now, Twin Rivers went to gaming tables not too long ago, correct?
A little over a full year ago. We, we've, we're into our second full year of tables.
Did that have to go to the voters also?
That, that was the one thing that went to the Lincoln voters. The VLT machines never went to the Lincoln voters, simply because the state declared that an expansion of their current gaming. The introduction of table games went before the Lincoln voters and the Newport voters. The Lincoln voters approved them, the Newport voters rejected them.
Was it an overwhelming vote?
It was approximately, almost 75%.
Okay. One, just one last question. I've spoken to people since the police chief and a fire chief have come down, and they're all, they'll say, well, what do you expect them to say? You know, they, they live in Lincoln, they work in Lincoln, they're going to support Twin Rivers.
Well, I don't, I'm not standing before you to argue pro or con gam- gambling or gaming, or what you should do in your community. That's your, that's why you're here. I'm simply giving you facts and figures, and I can assure you that my police chief would do nothing different. They, it speaks for themselves. I mean, the types of crimes, the calls for service, the number of calls, they're all, it's not something he can make up.
Right.
And same thing with the property values. We, I know that a independent person was looking at that. We've turned a lot of data over to them. I don't know that that's been presented to you yet, but I do know, I can tell you in a general form, that there's been absolutely no drop or correlation of a negative effect. It's actually our most high-end homes around the casino.
Now, you also bought a Pawtucket in North Providence?
We bought a seven, I believe, communities, three of which are distressed. We bought our one socket, North Smithfield, Smithfield, Cumberland, Pawtucket, Central Falls, and North Providence.
All right, thank you. Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Souza?
Just please. Did you say that you currently carry a 10% budget surplus?
Yes.
Can I ask what your bond rating is?
Double A.
Right. As far as tangible and real property, you said that they are taxed, but it's at a tax treaty?
The only thing that, the tax treaty involves the, the physical property. The casino took the town to court several years ago, believing their assessment was excessive. Their assess, their assessment, when I came into office in '07, was approximately $24 million. And the year that we went to court, which I think was four years ago, was $110 million. We negotiated that settlement with the casino at $94 million. We also had to do the same thing with our Amica campus, Amica corporate headquarters. As you know, real estate values, commercial as well, had taken quite a...
So, you negotiate an abatement and basically?
Yes, we, more so than abatement, we did most of it going forward.
Yeah.
So, we, I believe we went in terms of eight years. And so, instead of having to surrender a lot of money back, we, we did it as a forward negotiation.
Now, the tangible taxes, I mean, it, it's, as far as, you know, grills, all that, all that equipment and everything like that, other than the state, I guess, the, the machines themselves, is it taxable in, in your town?
Okay, so, the building is at $94,832,000. That generates a tax of $2,347,000. The personal property, which you can consider to be the tangible, is valued at $19,118,000, and that generates a tax of $706,413 for a total of $3,054 on the items owned by Twin River. And then, there is Williams Gaming, IGT Gaming, G-Tech Gaming, Sport Tech Gaming, which are all personal tax, and they total $793,535. And then, Twin River owns some smaller properties adjoining and whatnot. And so, as I said, the total tax is $3,847,574.
So, that in combination with the other, I guess, gambling, gambling percentage is where you're getting up to the...
So, the tax is simply what you would do on any property in your community.
Okay.
Because it's private, it's a private business.
See, that was, that was probably my biggest question.
The gaming shear that I pointed out
Yeah.
is a completely separate, it's 1.45% of the, what they call the VLT or slot machines and 1% of the table games. I can actually give you the gross numbers on that. And I'll leave you with these. So, the gross numbers in 2014 was $6,695,000 that the town received. And this past year, it was on the, so it's two categories now because two separate rates. So, on the VLT machines, it was $6,811,508, and on the table games, it was $1,058,353. So, that put our overage for the current year at $2,669.
Miss, your tax rate on real property?
Um, I have it, I believe, on that category of business, it's $24, $24.75 on commercial.
Wow. Well, you have separate for commercial and residential?
We have, yes, I'm sorry. We have commercial, residential, and we have homestead exemptions. So, the residential, I don't have with me, I didn't think we'd be talking about that, but we reduced the residential for residents by 35%.
Wow. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Limber?
I just had a couple of questions. You referred to the fact that 40% of your property is already taxed as, under the commercial tax. Does the 40% include the casino revenues?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Before the casino revenues, do you recall roughly what the percentage of commercial property is in, in your town?
It was almost the same percentage of levy at one time. It's just that levy has been changed with the introduction of new tax categories and exemptions. So, prior to this, our commercial taxes were higher and the realist, the, I'm sorry...
Higher as a, as a percentage?
Higher in general across the board, and the residential was significantly lower. And since then, they've added the, the additional exemption of homestead.
Okay. I'm not going to try to follow up on, on the detail of this, but I just wanted to get your concept. As I understand it, with the revenue from, from the casino, to some extent, what you're trying to do is set up one or more piggy banks, just in case something happens, just in case the casino leaves or closes or has a drop in revenue. What you're putting aside are, are piggy banks?
Well, yes. Between 2008 and this year, or next year, we only had one, and that was called the capital, of which will give you the projects that have been done. So, the money is, the money has been spent or encumbered, and I'll give you a list of those projects. We have put in addition on our police station, addition on our library, we, we've rebuilt every town park, every building in every town park. Our school has received $5 million over the last five years in additional money outside of their budget for capital. So, I have that list for you. There'll only be another bank created in 20, later in 2016, at the conclusion, actually, of our budget year in June of 2016, and that will be in the event that mass gaming ever takes us below our cap number.
Well, actually, and by the way, I think that's a great idea. I think a number of our residents here in Tibbeton are aware of the problems that have developed in Somerset, where they're losing their power plants, and unfortunately, they don't have piggy banks. But it's my understanding as well, from what you were saying, that the decision to, to fund certain projects in town and this concept of establishing the piggy banks, under your charter, under your town charter, that would have been the responsibility of the town council, am I correct?
Not entirely. The town council simply created the restrictive ordinance. In other words, the language that restricted the money. The town council then has nothing to do with budgeting the money or approving expense of the money. The town council oversees the budget throughout the year. We have a budget board that makes the final recommendation, and we have an annual meeting by the taxpayers that give final approval. The town council then serves as an oversight board on awarding bids and contracts. Or even more so than that, and in conjunction with these actions, we created what was called a capital improvement committee. We did that, and every department in town has represented, the school department, the budget board, the town council, the administrative branch. And we meet, initially, we met monthly, now we meet quarterly. We did a 20-year plan. We've updated that plan recently, every five years, simply because it's not the only money when you talk about buckets. We have several others that we've directed towards this. The other unique, I believe, unique is when we fund projects, and please, this is not any criticism of the school department, we do not put these projects into the school budget. They do not become part of the maintenance of effort, they do not become part of the annual budget. They're voted on by the voters as a separate resolution, of which the town controls the spending, the project, the final approval.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Sure.
The point I was trying to get to was, with respect to the funding of these programs that you have and the piggy banks that you have, who ultimately has control of that? Do the voters, it's, for example?
The voters ultimately.
Okay. Ultimately, it is the voters. Do you have a, a specific ordinance or a charter provision that, that sets out what the responsibilities are of the town council?
Yes.
The budget committee?
Yes, we do.
And the, and the voters?
Yes, so I, I, I will make the recommendation to a budget board, who is then authorized, they meet for three months. They're then authorized to make the final recommendation to the voters at an annual meeting. It's the voters that make the final recommendation. The town council does have the power to introduce any resolution not adopted by the budget board. That's only happened once in seven years, and that was for an open space purchase. So, pretty much routinely, the, the town's budget board will make the final recommendation to the voters, including all these, so think of these as just pots of revenue. I don't decide, I make recommendations. They're, they're available revenues, but they're for a specific use only. But other than that, the process is normal.
Does that include your gaming revenues?
Well, that's what I've been saying.
Because I thought you explained that, okay.
Yes, so the gaming revenues are restricted.
The gaming and the property tax, okay.
Here's, I guess, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to in terms of what the ultimate authority is, and I'm trying, really, I'm taking advantage of you, I'm trying to figure out what your plan is. Assuming I get X amount of money from gaming, $4 million, whatever it is, $5 million, at least it's my understanding, under our FTR, that the, there is nothing really to prevent the voters from saying, gee, that's great, let's reduce our taxes by $4 million. That's my understanding as to how it would work in Tibbeton. Is there anything that would prevent something like that in your town?
I'm going to probably refer this to your solicitor, but my answer is yes. By restricting the money
Okay.
those voters, those taxpayers can spend it. They don't need anybody's permission, but they can only spend it for the purpose for which it's been restricted. So, they couldn't, they couldn't say, and my personal belief, that because I consider this revenue to be unstable, and I don't mean that in a negative term, it's simply subject to markets and competition and customer reactions or whatever, the town felt that by restricting it to things that were not going to be repetitive or fixed cost in a budget, would provide investment in the town, which in turn will keep taxes low for many years in the future, and, and at the same time, protect the town from that instability. And as I said, we've, we have achieved a point where that revenue could drop by 33% and not affect our tax levy or annual operating budget. I'll leave you a copy of our budget books, and you can see from that how we've done it. But maybe your solicitor can shed some...
Well, actually, I don't want to take up too much time on that, but
No, but that's...
I, I, all I want to do is, apparently, you do have a model as to how this money is handled, and I think that that's...
I believe your charter is not unsimilar to ours.
Perhaps at some point, we'll be looking for you and some advice on how...
I, I believe, from a quick review, that your charter is not dissimilar from ours.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what I was getting at. Your council puts a restricted fund, not the voters.
Correct.
The council restricts the money. That's what I was trying to get at. And then, from that point, all your improvements are made from all these...
As I, as I say, our, our interpretation, gaming shear is not tax revenue.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
Tax revenue from these properties is not, is not altered in any way, it goes right into the operating budget.
Yeah, it's just the gaming, and that's what I was talking, okay. Any other questions from the council? Ma'am?
Welcome, Mr. Administrator. Couple of quick questions. I was surprised to hear that you're double A bond rating, and chances are, well, I'll just ask the question, when was the last time you had to go out to bond and get a rating?
I believe, John Craig, if I'm wrong, we, we were evaluated three months ago, and it has just been assigned to us at the beginning of the summer by both Moody's and Fitch.
Is there a question, Mr. Souza?
Yeah, I, I did have one more.
I only commented that...
Mad still has the floor. Go ahead, Mad.
I'd just say, a lot of the towns have lower ratings based on the condition of our
I can assure you, and Mr. Ward is here, that our ratings have increased mainly because of this restriction, the capital spending, the surplus that we're maintaining. Those are the key items in every review.
Yeah.
They've elevated our ratings because of it. We've also taken, I'm sure everybody else has the same struggles of trying to get your annual pension cost in line, so we've created an OPEB fund, trust fund for our other post-retirement benefits. Those were the four main items that brought our ratings up.
I guess that would be my point. So, do you have any history that comes to mind? Where did you start with your bond rating, and how long did it take to get to double A from?
We've never had a bad rating, but I believe we've come up two separate categories. We've never had a bad rating, but I believe we've come up two separate categories in four years, John could.
Good evening. No, I don't think the town has ever had a bad bond rating. I think the thing that's been, been the challenge is that when the economy tanked in 2009 and everybody had to figure it out, since that time, as the town administrator pointed out, in 2011 and '12, we actually lowered the levy each of those two years. Not because we were using gaming revenue, as was pointed out. And there's an additional feature that he refers to that I don't know whether you caught, but we had some debt retiring back then, and instead of absorbing it into the operating budget and using it for expenses, it has been specifically designated now, I think, for about four or five years, strictly for road reconstruction of local roads. And what it's serving as is a set of pile of money set aside in capital spending. And right now, there is a project ongoing for a ride, stage one study for the high school, so that that becomes money that can revert back to debt service when the time comes to do new debt service. So, it reduces any effect on levies in the future. So, when you combine all of those factors, our rating was good, and it has risen. Part of it was a change in the measurements that they used about three or four years ago, but and ultimately, it became a challenge to make sure we kept it there, and I think the conservative nature of the savings system, the smoothing of the tax levy impact affected by gambling. And I think, Sarah, to your question, that had to do with controlling this revenue, and you were talking about tax relief, I think the thing that was important about the ordinance that was passed by the council to set aside the capital money out of the excess revenues, when it was originally passed, it also linked an increase in the amount used in the budget to no more than an amount equal to the increase in the tax levy. So, the only way you could increase that estimate would be if you, if the budget required us to raise the tax levy, and that would be the maximum that they could raise it. So, since that time, it's never been necessary, but it restricts the ability of the voters to walk in and say, we know you're going to get $6.5 million, and we want to use it all for tax relief. Because I think ultimately, what has been the tax relief for the town of Lincoln was the expansion, the size, the value, going from 22 million to 94 million, and all the revenues that came from that are what created the tax relief that allowed our levy control, not the VLTs. And so, it became important not to allow that excess revenue to be grabbed and used for other purposes. And for the most part, as I've done some, and I just checked again today, I picked around 10 or 15 different properties randomly. For the most part, most people, many people in town have a tax bill in 2015 that's actually less than it was in 2009. Because the commercial expansion related to this and other projects with a fairly flat tax levy has allowed the average residential homeowner to be paying less money. Some pay more, many pay less.
Thank you.
And please know that not all of this, as I said, out of the 20 million, the voters still controlled 10. They simply made the decision to. By that, Mr. Watt points out, we've retired debt now for six or seven years and convinced our budget board, and then in turn, our voters, not to spend that money. We've put it into a separate capital item, not this one, but in the budget for road repair. We now spend $1 million a year on road repair, and we don't borrow a dime. So...
That was going to be my next, if I can ask another question, Matt, and then turn it back over to you, did you have any other questions? One of the, an issue that I'm being, that I'm concerned about is this never-ending reliance on the bonds and the never-ending, it seems, interest payments that we're making on purchases. Every time we talk about a shredder, I don't know what a shredder is, Steve, but I know you talk about shredders, or a fire truck, that I know what it is, I keep hearing what the amounts are for the interest that we're going to be paying. I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that with the program you've set up for your capital program, you could buy a fire truck without worrying about paying it out over a five or six or seven-year period and paying $100,000 in interest?
Last year, we invested $3 million in capital and didn't borrow a dime. And so, I'll give you how that money was spent. The school is simply broken into a gross amount. The other thing, and I really think you have to understand, is we never relied on this money. The town of Lincoln was spending too much of it when we started, and we reduced spending to reduce our levy.
Well, if I could, I guess, and the point I was trying to make is that, to the extent you're reducing interest payments or eliminating them completely, that's another part of the savings that comes from the programs that you've set up as a result of the presence of the casino.
And I'm not advocating one way or the other. I came to tell you that if you choose to do this, you have a great opportunity to invest back in your town. I can't tell you how long those resources will last, I can't tell you how big those resources will grow, but I can tell you, and I would implore you, that you have a great opportunity to make real good investments that you're going to have to make anyway, and you're going to have to borrow to do them if you simply either reduce your annual budget by taxes or increase your annual budget and spending with this money. I think it's, the money itself, there's absolutely nothing wrong with revenue. The mistake is often how it's used. I believe if you do some research on Leyland, Connecticut, and I'll be careful not to be misquoted, but I believe they've had a tax increase in the past several years, because they took a fixed amount of gaming money from the biggest casino in the United States, and obviously, have spent it all early on. So, there's a lot of examples out there. I've testified in many Massachusetts towns where you read in the paper, and I believe I just read one, where we're going to have to increase our policemen and firemen, and I'm not sure they know why. If you do, you do, but the casinos are self-contained. I'm not, once again, I'm not advocating specific casino, I'm just giving you facts. We have a compact with the casino, which I would urge you to explore if you go down that road, in which they pay for all police and fire details on the property. We almost, we seldom have to actually respond there with a police officer who's on duty. Our rescue does go there, but it actually goes there less times than it goes to our neighbor and communities for mutual aid. Thank you.
Matt, do you have further questions?
I do, because I appreciate the factual basis of the story, and it's clear, I mean, I think your point, Mr. Administrator, is clear. It's a combination of wise policies and the growth of the revenue source. But I want to get the rest of the story out, because in broad brushstrokes, I'm hearing you say your bond rating improved over the course of several years to where it is now. Your levy was stable and in some cases, reduced. I want to talk a little bit more about capital, then. Where are you? I use the word exposure, because if you measure the total number of projects you feel like you need to fund looking into the future, that's your exposure, your potential demand upon the taxpayers. And I'm going to assume for a second, and I'll let you tell the story, that you saw that exposure shrink steadily over the course of the last several years. So, when you do a five-year budget forecast, you don't anticipate levy increases in the future because you're not going to be borrowing?
I think that's a fair statement. We potentially will have levy, slight levy increases, potentially, for fixed costs, salaries and things like that. We have reduced our budget quite a bit in the last five years, or cut costs in many areas wherever we could, and in personnel and things like that. So, we, but as far as having to borrow, so maybe as a better way to answer your question is, we've invested $20 million in five years so far. That $20 million is going into some very conservative but needed projects. We put an addition on our police station, we didn't build a new police station. We put an addition on our library, we didn't build a new library. I welcome you to come visit our schools. They're pristine, they're not new. We have one beautiful new middle school, which predates this entire plan, of which we do carry some substantial bonded debt. Other than that, we're retiring almost all our debt. The retirement has been placed into another bucket, to use your reference of money. And that, we do have a major undertaking coming that we could never pay as you go, and that's our high school. That could have estimates of 40, 50 million dollars. But we do believe that we will have pretty much that annual bond payment set aside before we ask the voters to vote on that. In other words, we don't believe will be affecting our levy hardly at all in that borrowing. All the other projects that we've identified will be done by then, with the exception of about $5 million more in uncompleted roads, and that would be to finish the entire town. We are up to, I believe, 33 roads now in the last five years. Some of those are repaving, and some of those are brand-new sidewalks and curbs as well.
And so, it's only the state roads in Lincoln that are desperately needed?
You're very correct, Mr. Administrator.
What is your annual debt service right now?
Okay, on the school side, let me see if I've got this right. The total school is $3,169 a year. The total municipal right now is $617,000.
All right, so I'm
Those are annual, annual debts, sir.
Okay, but I'm slightly incredulous. So, you're a million, roughly a million even in the municipal side?
$617,000.
617,000, and then how much for the schools?
Schools are, I'm sorry, the schools are $3,787,000. As I say, we built a brand-new middle school, just, we completed it about five years ago. So, there, we just, we just re, because of our bond rating, we just rewrote that particular bond, and we are now going to save $140,000 a year for the entire term.
So, you're at about 4.4 million in debt service annual?
Correct.
And the town of Tibbetan, just for the sake of comparison, is $4 million?
Yes. Our total budget is $77,500.
So, your budget's almost two times the size of the town of Tibbetan's, or no, about 175% the size, and you have the same debt load as the town of Tibbetan does? Just a couple of the operational questions. You don't have a fire department, that does help your budget.
The town of Lincoln has fire districts, they tax independently. This town does run the full-time rescue. It's not part of the fire department.
And your pension participation, you don't have any private municipal pensions, are they all merged?
We do, we have a local pension plan. The local pension plan includes our non-teaching employees in the school department, our police officers, and a handful of members who are treated independently from some of the fire districts.
And are your funds all funded?
That pension in 2008 was 105% funded. It fell in the nine crash. However, we have since, and if you need exact numbers, the finance directors here, we have since changed our assumptions dramatically. And so, the unfunded liability, I believe, is at 63% currently. We make 100% of our annual OCG payment and have for the past eight years. And as I also pointed out, we have established a other post-retirement trust fund, and I believe that fund is now in its fourth year, of which we no longer are, or we still honor pay-as-you-go for the retiree healthcare, however, we've put it into a trust fund, and I believe we put an initial $400,000 a year into the fund above the actual payments due.
I have a couple of questions for the council president, Mr. McSout, who made the journey to Tibbetan and got his passport stamped and everything.
Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome.
Members of the council, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. President, was that Dr. McSout your father?
No, that was my cousin.
Your cousin, okay, I won't hold it against you.
Okay.
He's a dentist, and he's, I kept him very busy at a younger point in my life. What is your feeling, overall sense, of the acceptance of your residents in your district? Because you're elected by districts in Lincoln, correct? With this facility, as it has gotten bigger, it has gotten a heck of a lot bigger than it used to be.
This is, I'm actually the councilman for this district. So, when they first started to come up to the council with ideas of expansion, one thing I can say is, everything they did was very transparent, very much in the open. There was a lot of public hearings, there was a lot of public input. At first, there was a lot of hesitancy. I think part of it had to deal with the fact that it was gambling itself and the people who are against gambling. And the others came from some of the residents, which was fear of the unknown and the NIMBY attitude. Twin River looked, worked with the residents, worked with the council. Any fears, any issues that were brought up were mitigated almost immediately. Neighbors who had complained about increased dust and dirt on their houses because of the construction, Twin River would go in and would actually power wash their house, clean that off. People that were concerned about lights from traffic. Landscaping was done to get rid of the lights that were doing that. Normal parking lot lights that they had were altered, and they were put into the low-intensity, shorter ones, so that there's not as much light splash. I live approximately one mile from the facility. Back when it was a racetrack, you had the lights shining on the actual oval that they raced. That's gone. Now, unless you actually look for it, if you're on Lewis Quizzit Pike, you really do not see the facility. So, while at the beginning, it was a little contentious, feeling has been more adoptive now. People understand how much money comes into the town. We just held our public hearing two Tuesday nights ago in regards to the expansion planned by Twin River to put a hotel, and we had three people in attendance. One of them was a budding neighbor who Twin River is dealing with, talking about lights. Another individual was talking about, wanted to know what time trash was going to be picked up, how trucks were going to be brought in and out, and wanted to promote that Lincoln residents would be hired preferentially at the facility. And the third person had been an employee till about eight years ago and just didn't want, didn't think expansion was necessary. But that was it, that was what we had.
You know, sometimes people look at a story like this, and then they struggle, because I know the town of Foxborough struggles with Mr. Craft, and there's a great deal of tension between this powerful entity and what is relatively a small town, Foxborough's not much bigger than Lincoln or Tibbetan. Have you had any problems that you feel like you had to smooth over as the years have gone by?
No. One of the things that I would say, and it's really factual, it's not to promote them, is that any issue I had, I could call either Kim, I could call the vice president, Craig Skullos. If they did not answer the call immediately, I got a call back on the same day. If it had something to do with whether it was a type of a concert they were having, whether it was an event they were having, whether it was an incident inside the facility, we were able to talk to them, we were able to get answers right away. Anything they wanted to do, they brought to the council first. They would approach me as the council president and ask for a work session, and we would bring them in. It was public, it was open to everyone. They would come in and they'd say, this is what we want to do. In fact, three years ago, I think it was, or two years ago, two state representatives out of one socket put forward a bill to change the Rhode Island state law to allow the hotel. Myself and my council unanimously passed a resolution saying that we were opposed to that. When I spoke to Twin River about it, they said that it was not their idea, it was not something they had planned to do at that time. And that if it was something that they wanted to do, they wanted to work with the town, with the planning department, with the town planner, and the council, so that it would be a smooth transition. That bill was pulled from the General Assembly. The new bill that was put in, was put in after they talked to the council by themselves, and that's what we're working on now. So, as far as having a rough interaction with them, as far as having a lot of tension, in my experience, and I've been on the council now 11 years, we have not had that.
I'll direct this question to anyone from Lincoln this evening who wants to answer it. It is kind of remarkable, the turnaround at Lincoln Mall, because it was tumbleweed city for a long time, and really, you had facilities being taken over by part-time night schools. They weren't even viable retail centers anymore, and the place has really picked up. What is your sense of the relationship between What is your sense of the relationship between, if there is one, between the recovery of the mall and the growth of the casino?
I don't believe there is a relationship. I believe they're independent. Lincoln Mall was purchased by a group that remarketed it, redesigned it, came in with new ownership and lender policies. The original owners had an interior mall too small to compete with major malls. They also would not relinquish any ownership control to, say, a chain restaurant, which is very popular now. For instance, there's now a Chili's on site who own their own building, yet they're located on the mall property, and that is one of the highest grossing Chili's in New England. I think it's location. I think this area was developed via commercial strip. The town had the road and the state, the town and the state together with EDC decades ago widened the road, put new utilities in, the town is sewered. And so it was just, I believe, the proper ownership and marketing of the property that identified what would work in that location. And you have to realize, in addition to a mall, we have office parks that span 20 and 30 buildings, and they're almost at occupancy, mostly medical-related facilities, doctors' offices, x-rays, techs. So, I would say it's a decades-old planning process that resulted in that. Find, I find very little correlation between that and the casino. We do have a, a hotel on that strip near the mall, which runs at a, it's a long-stay hotel, it runs at about 95% capacity, which we, again, find no correlation with Twin River.
So I guess I'll finish with this question, Mr. Administrator. Do you ever lose sleep over anything? Because the, the lean jerk reaction is it's too good to be true, so there has to be something...
Mr. Ojek, I lose sleep over the fact that you don't have to run for election and I do. Other than that, and I, and I will, you know, you made a comment about the traffic and, of course, the Foxborough Stadium. It's not even a comparison. A casino of this size runs 24 hours a day. There is no traffic spillage into the neighborhood, apparently people are not interested in driving around. They have highway access, they come on, they come off. The police monitor, I can get you the, the number of automobile accidents off the property or approaching the property or leaving the property, I assure you, it's quite low. We have a junior college on that same route. So it's a busy route. It's also a cut through to our commercial area for trucks and stuff, but I would invite you to come on a Friday or Saturday evening and drive the area. I would invite you to do it in the early evening or rush hour, and I just think it's the nature of the business. And once again, I'm not here to, to advocate or promote Twin River, I'm here to tell you what's happening in the town of Lincoln. There's almost no traffic backups. There's no, our analysis shows us that when it was a racetrack, much like a sports stadium, everything began at one time and ended at one time, and the traffic used to be backed up for nine miles in the 1960s and 70s at that same facility, when it was a horse racing facility. They began at one time a day and ended at one, and the whole crowd came at one time and left at one time. So, we've demanded traffic studies for every major project. The town certainly demands all the normal studies, it goes through planning, goes through zoning, they have to produce all those results, the state has to approve them. So, I, I really think the best way to answer it would be to come and see, and not, I'm talking specifically the traffic. As I pointed out, it was different than I think this proposal that you're facing. This grew in a residential area, has been there for 60 years, and it just kind of evolved into what it is today. And it's, you know, in size, I think it's significantly bigger than what's being proposed here. But, you know, Mr. McSoud has testified that he lives a mile away. I have friends and neighbors that live a block behind it, and there's no more traffic there than there is, because they come up 146 and they get back on 146. And from what I've seen of your proposal, it looks pretty similar. I wouldn't say it's exact, but it looks pretty similar.
Any other questions from the council?
I think you've already suggested the answer to the, to my question. The last time your representatives were here from the town of Lincoln, I had asked whether or not the town has a liaison, and appropriately enough, the answer was no. But if I, if I caught one word you said, apparently you do have a liaison at the casino that if there's a problem, you can contact. Did I, did I miss that?
Well, I don't, we don't have a formal liaison. We've just, our relationship with the casino has evolved with the casino. I think the town council president said it best. We faced many of the issues, even though we already had a casino, because it was growing and looking to extend hours and looking to add machines. Initially, the town of Lincoln did a non-binding resolution, and it was rejected. It was only after experiencing it and getting to demonstrate that all those things that people worried about, such as crime and traffic and noise, et cetera, didn't happen, and that the revenue would benefit the residents and taxpayers of the town. So once all those things were met, a rejection vote then went to a 75% approval vote.
But if I, if I had an issue, if I just wanted to discuss some issue in town that related to the casino, is there someone that you do contact on a regular basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, so in that sense, they do have a liaison for the, for any town issues?
Yes. And as I said, we have a compact with them. Aside from all this other money we've spoken about, I believe they invest about $1.8 million a year into public safety on the property. And I believe they also have a security force of about 140 retired police officers, which is regulated by the state lottery commission.
The, the compact that you referred to, I assume is a public document. If you haven't already done so...
It is not a formal agreement.
Okay.
It is not a, it's not a contract. It's grown with the casino. The casino is honored it each and every year. I could not tell you that they're bound to it. And the fire side and rescue side, they are through state law, the local fire chief gets to determine the amount of people they have to employ or keep on the property under the, the new fire laws. On the police side, I can tell you that it's voluntary on the part of the casino.
Is this something, is this something in writing, however informal it is? Okay.
No.
Just an understanding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? President McSoud, would you like to add anything further? Your town administrator kinda took over mine and does too, that's fine.
That's what he does, and I, I let him do that, and it's okay. I, I think the only thing, other thing I'll add to it is, once again, living next to it, having kids who have gone through the school system, Twin River is always there with their philanthropy as well. During Thanksgiving time, they're giving out food baskets, during Christmas time, they're giving out food baskets. They're helping the schools, any group that goes to them, they have a donation group or whatever that reviews it, and they've been good with that. As I said, I sit where you sit, I have to work for election the way you guys have to work for election. I go up and down the streets, I knock on every door. The people that were against it at the beginning, I think, were looking that it was gonna be the next Foxwoods, it was gonna be Lexor, it was gonna be some monstrosity that was there. Any issues, restrictions, or whatever that we have placed upon the place legislatively or through ordinance? It's something that we have been able to work out collaboratively with the entity being a major business in our town.
Any other questions? I wanna thank you all for coming, this has been very informative. You can give that to the owner, the clerk. At this point, I'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll proceed. It shouldn't be much longer after this.